Good evening, everybody. Welcome again to our full committee Zoom meeting. Thank you for all being here and I'll just start off by saying I might be talking a little quietly at times and muting myself because in this crazy time that we're in, we have three people. I have three people in this room trying to have a Zoom meeting at the same time. And we have internet issues in other parts of the house. So if I'm in and out, that's why I apologize. I will start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. On the agenda this evening, we are opening session, our opening procedures of gender review and adoption, a COVID-19 update, superintendent's mid-cycle review, approval of the Student Opportunity Act submission, possibly FY20 budget update, hourly employee payroll, superintendent's report, assistant superintendent's report, warrant approvals, minutes. Actually, I don't think we have minutes, do we?
We do.
March 11th. Acceptance of gifts and donations, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. So, welcome back, everybody. Thank you for joining us. And I will first ask everybody, all the committee members are, if you're here, I'm going to do a roll call. So Kathy Bates. Yep, Paul Kendall. Mark Terry.
Here.
Erin. I don't see Erin yet. I talked to her earlier and I think she will be here joining us eventually, but we do have a quorum, so we will move forward and I will ask Jim to update us on COVID-19, please, Jim.
Sure, thank you. I don't want to say much has changed since last week because it hasn't, except last Thursday, the Commissioner of Education did come out with some guidelines, recommendations for remote learning. And do we want to have Erin, she just popped up? I don't know if it says she's here. So if we can just make note she is. So, you're good now.
Now I can unmute myself.
Okay, you got it. Okay, thank you. So I was just starting with the Commissioner of Education last week coming out with recommendations and guidance with regard to remote learning. Spent a lot of time and I want to say thank you so much to the AEA and their leadership across the district. We spent a lot of time from Friday morning through Sunday night, working with one another, making sure that whatever plan we were putting out for our educators, as well as our families and our students in particular, was appropriate, that would actually move us in a positive direction with regard to remote learning. And I couldn't have done it without their guidance and their work with me and really very much a collaborative effort. So first and foremost, thank you to them. And today was day one of the remote learning plan. And what I'm asking our community to do is, you know, give us some time, give us a few weeks to allow this to settle in, to see what's going and working well and what's not and what eventually needs to be revisited. And hopefully we'll have more clear guidelines in terms of how long we'll be out. I certainly, you know, my gut tells me that if we're back in session, it'll be a miracle. That's what my gut tells me. And there are so many moving parts to this. And what I hope is, you know, long term is we've got, each building is got so much to do on their own now to try and figure out how to best serve the kids within their buildings. So we, quick update, Friday will be deploying another 240 Chromebooks. And I cannot say enough about Paul Carpenter and his entire staff and the work that they have to do behind the scenes to get this even ready. I don't want them in the buildings, but yet they're, four or five of them in there trying to disinfect all the Chromebooks and then to reformat them. So there'll be work able to be usable at home because we have a lot of security measures on the Chromebooks within the schools and you can't just take the Chromebook home and it'll connect to your internet and you'll get, it doesn't work that way. So we have to reformat them as well. So, thank you to them. The Bowden and her staff and with a lot of volunteers have been phenomenal. We're up to 95 meals today, not meal, individuals. So the meals multiply it by six, I would say now, right? It's three, two a day for the next three days. So that number's steadily going up. And Lisa gave you an update last week when we met, just with regard to other areas that folks are able to find food for their families during this really challenging time. So I think that is really the update I have because we gave you a pretty exhaustive one last week, but really not much has changed with the exception of the implementation of the remote learning plan, which began today. Questions on that piece?
Anybody have any questions or comments?
No, just thank you to you and the staff and Paul. And I look forward to Friday getting enough devices for the kids can be on them. And, you know, I do, you know, I was really sad that I couldn't work for a couple hours. I had to give my, my computer to my son, but, you know, so Friday will be one of the ones taking advantage of all Paul's efforts, so.
Right. And believe me, they're going to need after Friday, they're going to need some time away and down, time to get healthy then.
Thank you for everybody. We know that this is a difficult time for every human being in the world right now. And we really appreciate everything that you're all doing. I know Jim's been on this from day one, talking to anyone he could talk to and planning. And the circumstances are constantly changing and you're all doing amazing jobs with your own buildings. And Lisa with the nutrition and Paul with the Chromebooks, Paul Vieira with the jokes on Twitter and all the other things that I'm sure you're doing as well. And we appreciate all of you very much. And I've seen some really wonderful parent feedback. And I know that we're all just trying to do our very best under very difficult circumstances. So, thank you.
Can, I have a question about the Chromebooks, Jim? Are there enough Chromebooks for whoever's asked for them?
So, yes, at this point in time, it's, again, what I want to be clear on is just the logistics of getting Chromebooks to individuals and making it so our IT department is not coming into the office every day to hand out one or two Chromebooks a day. It's, so we all have deployed almost 400, I think 370, 380 overall Chromebooks. So that's about 15 to 18% of our entire student population. And, you know, as we continue through this process, you know, and we find that more families need them, then we'll deal with it on a case by case basis. But to ask that staff to come in daily to do this is inappropriate. But yeah, we have enough. If you go to the middle school, they don't have any iPads left or Chromebooks. We've exhausted all of the Chromebooks out of the middle school and redeployed them. So there'll be other buildings.
Great, thanks.
Other questions, comments? Okay, we can move to the next item on the agenda. Jim?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we don't stand still just because we're at home. And in terms of evaluations and reviews of goals and part of the process with superintendents is that we do a mid-cycle check-in. It's not an evaluation at this point in time. It's really, Jim, where am I with the goals? Where are we with meeting them and the remainder of the year, where should we focus our attention? I would ask for some leniency over the next few weeks and over the past few weeks that probably not all goals are going to be fully met. And what I would say is when we set the goals, a lot of them were in collaboration with our building principals, dealing with staff evaluations, right? There's a tied goal, shared goal across the district on how we were going to look at evaluations. So let me do this. I'm going to share some of the things that, on my screen in a moment. Just pulling it up. With you. You should be able to at least see this. And when we look at some of the goals that we started with for the year, and I'll just go through them. The first one was looking at evaluations and that we were committed as an organization to do a better job of evaluations, not only in terms of the content of our evaluations, but the number, the frequency of our visits. And until March 12th, we were absolutely on pace. And I have building principals here in the meeting today that would tell you, we were absolutely on pace to meet this goal this year, which would have in effect done, you know, a lot more. We would have completed a lot more observations, announced and unannounced than we've ever done in the district. And which is a good thing. I think it's an important piece of it. So all observations will not be completed by April 1, just so you know. That's, I think I talked to Mike Gira on March 12th. He said, Jim, I've got, next two weeks are blocked off and penned in for all these evaluations and observations. Guess what? They didn't happen. So we were probably about 90% complete, you know, once I pulled all the data together. Then the next piece had to do with, and we can go back and talk about those after. I just wanted to, again, this is about me just giving you a check in where we are and where we, you know, we're going to focus the rest of our year on. The professional development for our new implementation of the literacy program. As you can see, it was about ensuring that all units of study were ready to go for the fall of 2020. They've had two for six meetings in Warren and the Mendez Professional Development Opportunities for our staff. There were scheduled for eight more training days, four in mid-April and four in May. And Paul Vieira has been working at rescheduling those. Paul, do you have those dates now? Are you waiting till the fall?
We already have date schedule. We have a tentative schedule for the fall that she's working on in terms of the two additional meetings that we had set up for this year. One was mid-April, which we know isn't going to happen. And then the next set is for late March. So what we're working on with Claire is, do we push those dates into the 2020, 21 school? Find a way to virtually do something this school year with teachers or over the summer to try to capture some of that professional development to start the school year off. So we're going back and forth and we're waiting to see what our directive is after May 1 to try to make sure we're not planning something that having to replan it.
So, thank you. So that's, I mean, that's where we are with this. And I want to be very thoughtful too, as we move forward, that we're going to have to rethink our professional development and the beginning of our school year for next year, no matter what. Should we not go back to school? We know and recognize the fact that there are going to be some gaps and there'll be some gaps for students in grade levels and transitions. And it would be to our benefit to ensure that staff has appropriate amount of time to work with one another and to identify those gaps and then vertically have that conversation. So we can ensure that we're closing those as time goes on. That's a big fear of ours. It's a big fear of the teachers that we recognize that there will be some gaps that are created and some will widen for some of our more vulnerable students. But if we can figure out a way to provide them the time to meet and then work through what frameworks were covered, what frameworks should be covered a little bit more, then that's what we'll do. So the next two goals actually relate to SEL. And I certainly think, you know, Jen Cutler's on here and I just want to give her, this is baptism by fire too for Jen, but she has done a phenomenal job of working with our entire staff and our community with regard to our SEL initiatives and whether it's looking at the website she's created for families or students or it's the Zen Den she sends out on Mondays to our staff or it's ensuring working with our counselors that they're prepared through this really traumatic experience to meet the needs of our students. She's been there and she's leading that charge. And I'm very thankful for her and the work she's done. And so what you'll notice is the evidence of this for these next two goals directly relates to the work that Jen and the teachers have done. And I certainly think if you were to say, hey, Jim, have we completed these goals? I think they're always ongoing with SEL and the work we're doing. But goal number two, that relates specifically to communicate SEL professional development to educators, is you can see there's a tremendous amount of evidence that that has been done and is continuing to be done along with goal three, which is engaging parents in SEL. And certainly that has been, you know, it'll continue to get better and better in terms of that engagement piece, but I would have assumed we're really close to meeting that goal this year. So that's important. I know Jen's on here, so thank you, Jen. Anything you want to say, Jen, about, quickly about the SEL initiatives and that process that has been really a collaborative effort?
Sure. So I think that, you know, I'm really pleased with where we've, how far we've come. I think that especially right now with what we're going through, I think it sort of emphasizes how important the social emotional piece is and that we're really working to support all of our staff and our parents and our students. And, you know, I think that a big push that I have had is really to help our educators to feel that they are supported and that their social emotional needs are being met so that they can then help our students in that area. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of what, where I am with that.
And then the final goal that we had set as a committee and myself was still continuing about engagement, community partners and learning, but also looking at a more unified approach to our messaging to our community, whether it's every Friday now, we know from each building that the messages are coming out. There's not a lot of cross-contamination from one building to another. We are on pace to have a new website set up, ADA compliant, come the fall. Again, we had a group working together, Paul Carpenter, Anne Canton, Barbara, Paul, Dave DeGeralamo, Kelly St. Kern, Claudia Bennett came together as a subcommittee to actually have vendors come in and do presentations. And we chose the Blackboard, which is the same company that does our reverse 911, if you will, our calling system. And they have a lot of experience with school websites. And Paul Carpenter and Anne Canton are now taking the brunt of the work of trying to figure out how to transfer a lot of our material. So in the fall, we'll be able to roll it out to the community. So, so that's where we are on the goals. And like I said, I think, I believe we would have accomplished actually all of the goals by the end of the year had we not had this unbelievable experience happening to us right now. So, questions?
Go ahead, Mark.
Have to go ahead.
I just had a quick question. Is that document available to us, Jim?
I did send it to you.
Thanks.
A while back because remember we, yeah.
I don't remember.
It's okay. We had a couple of meetings we canceled.
Yeah.
Because of the coronavirus and the stoppage of school. But I will make sure you do get it again. It'll be part of this package as well.
Oh, great, thanks.
I didn't resend it and I apologize for that. It was sent originally when we set it up for March 25th, I think.
Okay, alright.
Mark, did you have a question?
More statement, thanks Lori. I think, you know, purpose of one of the reasons why we do these meetings is always this discussion is because it's supposed to be a little bit closer to mid-year. It might have been a little bit earlier in the ordinary course. But it's mostly to do the check-in as you described, Jim, and to provide feedback and support to you as we look at the rest of the year. And to me, what was important in this exercise, in addition to hearing all the progress that's been made, is also to recognize that, you know, the world has changed and that I think from my perspective is one fifth of your supervisors. You know, it's important to recognize that the progress or to acknowledge the progress that might be made going forward will not be as substantial as you might have wanted or we might have wanted. And bless that. And let's say, you know, when we talk about this, if there's a, we often talk about, is there a place where we want to see you dedicate more energy towards the rest of the year? And to me, this is kind of one of those places where I think the goals that we started with, to some degree, go out the window a little bit and the single goal sort of says manage this crisis and manage the situation and do that as best as possible, which I absolutely think you did a phenomenal job of. You know, just from the sort of structural standpoint of, hey, we look at a mid-year, provide feedback. It seems this year is different than others because what we would have said three weeks ago was a fundamentally different thing than we need to say now, which is first and foremost, we're managing transition in a crisis and that obviously takes priority over everything else.
Yeah, Mark, to Mark's point, I would consider, could we amend the document of like, what does this goal look like now in light of the new reality? Because I think we can still shift it, like especially on the social emotional piece, like hearing about the lunch bunches that are still occurring and hearing about the different ways. Like it's just a, it's a fundamental shift for all of us, but I think these goals can each individually shift. And I mean, if Jim, you're, you're saying your gut is that we're not going back, I would agree with you. LA already just called it, I think today, that they're not going back to school. So what is that, what do these individual goals look like with not going back to school? And what's possible? And can we sort of do a little bit of a pivot at this midway point to still have goals that are be held accountable, but those are completely in light of our new situation?
Sure. I certainly think, I've always been of the mindset that I think goals are static, or not static, they're fluid, right? That we need to be looking at it from a year to year, but also a month to month. Things pop up and we may not be able to, they tell teachers this all the time, as educators, you start your great intentions with a goal and all of a sudden you get halfway through the year and like, oh, there's no way this is gonna, I bit off more than I can chew here and it's not going to work. So how do we, how do we pivot, if you will, to ensure that really quality work is being done and that the goals then become attainable? And that's how I view this. I think, like I said, I think we're, here we are in April. If you were to look at the goals themselves, they're 90% accomplished. The one piece that we are not going to be able to go back on is we'll not be able to finalize the the evaluation piece, the component. That's just not going to happen. But the SEL stuff is ongoing. We're still doing those things. And, you know, the communication piece and the website, that work is still ongoing. So I think to me, looking at where we are, you know, where we're headed, it really is about looking at today, trying to forecast where we're going to be come June and putting into place the measures we need to close those gaps that are naturally going to exist. It's me supporting our principals who in each building have very different concerns and issues that they have to deal with. I am so glad I'm the superintendent of schools and not the principal of Ashland High School right now. Because I think some of the challenges that Kelly's going to specifically have with regard to graduation and senior week, and those are really charged issues. And trying to do what we think is best for kids and families within the scope of the world today. And that is critically important. So to your point, Erin, I think it's good, but I don't see any need to adjust those as much as I think we continue to support the building principals, Jen Cutler and the SEL initiatives that are still ongoing. We didn't stop those just because of this. If anything, we actually enhanced those and increased them, so.
The point I think, what I look at is the goals are really still the same. How we're meeting them is changing. And I think as a school committee, we've stayed, we've always stayed at the goal level rather than the task level. The task level is sort of a presentation from Jim, how he's going to accomplish the goal. But even as I said, you know, the goal has changed. In some ways, it's really more about how it's accomplished than what the goal is. And I didn't, I don't feel the need necessarily to go and amend goals. I don't necessarily want to put more on you, Jim, as to do or cause you to change something that's going to have you then doing the same thing with each of your principals along their goals. I think we all understand the world has changed and, you know, if you're confident these goals are still be things that we're going to be making progress on, you know, and sort of say it's just really about the devil of the details. And be mindful of that when we do your final year-end evaluation as well.
Yeah, and I think we've talked about what the goals mean for us a lot in previous times. And to me, it's really a tool. And, you know, I don't think we need to adjust them. Here we have a tool that doesn't, that is kind of off to the side now, right? You know, we have a lot going on. We know you're focused on that. One, just comment and, you know, kind of a question on how we can support this. I know prior to this, we had some, we had a lot of work going on within the buildings and different things. And the thing, you know, that goes to me, just because I have someone in the programs, you know, the, what happens next year at Mendez as part of that shift towards unification? And what can we do to help support, to make sure that gets the attention? And I'm not saying that in that, obviously, you know, they're going to give it the attention it deserves. But, you know, Mike and Claudia have a lot on their plates relative to what's going on. But we also want to make sure that, you know, next year's, you know, stepping stone to the final transition to the unified programming and all the other different things that the administrators are going to be doing that they would have been doing anyway, they're really important, you know? You know, are any of those things in jeopardy? Are there things we can do to support and make sure that, you know, that we're going to be able to still be successful at those things that are incredibly important come next year?
So, funny you ask that. It was at Monday, Michael, that we, he and I actually talked about it. And we're, we're trying to figure out how we can move forward in a very thoughtful and deliberate manner, considering the pressure and the changes that have occurred in the past three weeks and will continue for the next three to four weeks, if not longer. And that's something that Mike and Claudia are engaged in dialogue and Mike is keeping me informed and he's concerned. I mean, I'll let Mike speak for himself, but we don't know what to do, to be honest. I mean, we're, we're thinking about it. Is that fair, Mike?
And I assume, you know, there's different flavors of gaps giving our current programming there, right?
Absolutely.
For next year, so.
And communication to families and the events that Mike was going to have with families and conversations about planning and, and so, I mean, briefly, Mike, has that sort of captured what you and I spoke about?
Yeah, there are a lot of moving parts that would be a lot easier right now if we were actually in a building. So I think that the goal is to move forward, but we need to do so thoughtfully. And I think it's going to take some finessing and some continued conversations between, you know, Mrs. Bennett and I and the staff and obviously we'll keep Mr. Adams in the loop and as we always do. But right now, our goal is to make this transition happen and happen successfully. That right now is where we stand.
Yeah, so I think like how that fits into Jim's goals are, you know, I think it's important that we're talking about it. We Yeah, so I think like how that fits into to Jim's goals are, you know, I think it's important that we're talking about it, we. Are um sort of committed to a process. And we set the goals and more than half the year has gone by and this is the opportunity. For the school committee to let Jim know whether he was on track to meet those goals. Um, on the other hand, and the processes do make us feel like things are a little bit normal, but they're not. Um, so I think a few other things have moved ahead of the line, we have some new priorities and new ways of doing things. And, you know, my suggestion, I think, to the school committee would be, you know, at this point, normally you would report back to me with your thoughts about whether or not Jim was meeting the goals. We would have a conversation and then it it's really more to just let him know whether he's on track. And so that there are no surprises at the end of the year, or if the committee felt that we need to pivot, focus on some other things. I think it's pretty clear what to everybody watching, the what we need to focus on now and that. A lot of the things in the goal document, like social emotional learning and. Holding each other accountable and all that stuff are still gonna happen, but they're just gonna happen in different ways than we anticipated. And I think really just a, you know, a brief check back in. Maybe you could let me know and and members come up, you know, if you disagree with this process, but I'm thinking. Let me know like you normally would about how you thinks have gone to date and whether you have any suggestions about the next couple of months. Um, but as far as whether we're going to keep doing everything. The way that we outlined in that document, I think we all understand that we're working with a different system at the moment. But it's still an opportunity for Jim to have our feedback and for him to know whether there's anything. Else that he should be doing. Um, but we're talking about all those things even more regularly now, so I think it's pretty clear to everybody. But I think that's kind of where we're at with the process. I'm I'll give anyone who wants to a chance to weigh back in on that. But I'm thinking normally we would have two weeks for you to get something to me and.
You say two weeks, Lori?
Yeah, we could still take that two weeks and you just. Send me a blurb like we have done in the past, um with the expectation that. The document as written is not necessarily gonna be the guiding force for the rest of the year because. We all know why, you don't need me to say it again. Everybody good with that approach?
Wish me, Lori.
Yes, that sounds good, Lori.
Paul, Kendall?
I I had said sounds good first, but Kathy.
Oh, did I uh, did I talk over you, Paul?
I'm sorry. Okay, so that's how we'll we'll move forward for now and thank you. And we can move on, I think the next one, we got some news about that, the Student Opportunity Act.
Yeah, I mean, there's surely, there's no news in terms of. Um, today is the date, we're supposed to uh have the Student Opportunity Act submitted to. The Department of Education as um adjusted by uh law that was passed in January, but here's the deal. Uh, we've been told not to submit it yet, um we certainly can. Uh, because there there is legislature legislative action that's looking to move the date, um again, because it was a legal. Uh, requirement, we had to have it done, uh we received uh guidance from. Um, the Superintendent Association as well as the Commissioner. That uh we can approve it, but we should not be submitting it at at this point in time yet, so. You've had the document, uh I've shared it once with you, I'm gonna pull it back up on the screen. Again, for those who are just watching, uh what was required was that as a district because of the chapter seventy money. Uh, that was given to um as part of the 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 local aid package, uh any increase in this in the. Chapter seventy, you had to identify some target areas um that you wanted to focus on uh in terms of allocating. The resources, so. In in Ashland, we focused on um a number of components, um such as our. You know, at the high school level, uh some of our Hispanic Latino students uh in their attendance and graduation, um were not. Co- comparable to the rest of our our uh student population, uh we certainly had achievement gaps. Um, in in our populations and so we reviewed those. Um, looking at students with disabilities, English language learners, low income. Uh, and as you know, we're moving in, um and I had shared this uh at a previous meeting. Looking at a new new literacy program, uh continuing to look at responsive classroom, these are evidence-based programs. Um, where we're focused on uh allocating the resources to these initiatives. Um, and that's what they're they're requiring at the state level is just to say, hey. Um, eventually we want we want to move to a co-teaching model, I don't know honestly how we will be able to, and this is a three-year plan. It's not a one year, it's not, this is what we're doing next year, uh it's supposed to to be wrapped up in a three-year window. And should mirror a little bit of what your blue, our what we call our blueprint, but the strategic plan. Um, we know co-teaching model is a better model, we talked about this before. It's it's more expensive and I don't know in light of where we are today. Um, and how quickly uh the uh financial situation of our community changed overnight. Uh, how some of these will play into it, um so again. While we have to be thoughtful, um. I'm I'm hopeful that the chapter seventy. You know. Revenue that is expected to come our way, the aid that's supposed to come our way from the initial budget is truly gonna be what. Um, we've been told. But the more we're closed down, uh the less revenue that the the state of Massachusetts is gonna have to be able to distribute. So, this. Conversation could all be for naught in terms of an increase that we're we're getting. So, you know, that's the that's the piece, then the engaging of families, uh continued engagement with families. Um, you know, Pete, before we ended, you know, he had some wonderful cultural nights and had some more planned. But it's about what are we going to do in the future to help close these gaps, but also the continued outreach, so. Um, I I did present this the last time, it was a long meeting, it was at the end of the night and. In the end, this is just a requirement that we produce uh a document for the Department of Ed, it's to me more legislative red tape. And we're doing these things as part of our blueprint, to to be honest, so.
Jim, are you looking for a vote tonight or do you wanna?
Yeah, we could, I I we should, um you've seen it, I presented it before, i- if you would um. To to vote to approve the Student Opportunity Act um plan, then when the the Commissioner gives the green light. To then start, to be honest, I've already uploaded it. And could can modify it and as soon as they give us the direction, uh they want to accept these plans. We'll be ready to go, but I need, it has to have a vote because there is a, um as you can see, we were supposed to vote on March twenty-fifth. Um, and I have to change this, but it has to be certified that that you, um. I have to check a box that's saying you did vote on it.
Okay, and then I'm just looking for questions if there are any and if not, a motion.
I'm moved to accept the uh outline of the Student Opportunity Act as presented.
I can.
All in favor?
I.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you, and and again, like I said, um I I don't know when the um the. When we'll be required to submit it, um lots lots of moving parts at the department level as well, so. Uh, the next piece is, it's gonna be a combination, the F I twenty, FY twenty budget update and number five. Uh, the discussion and continued pay of of those who are um through E D P nutrition. Uh, as well as um. A couple uh employees at at the pitaway, which if you remember, uh you approved the pay through the initial closure, which was April sixth. Um, so we'll 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 tie that in, Barbara's here and I'm gonna have her give you a rundown as well, but just a just a. Quick highlight, high-level overview, uh we did put into place today, um. Freeze and all um spending uh across the district, um as the town has as well. And understanding that that the revenues for FY twenty are going to be hit significantly. Uh, as well, uh for the town of Ashland, I I don't even wanna venture to guess uh FY twenty-one yet at this point. Uh, but in years past, when we went through this recession and talking to Michael and Brittany and correct me, Barbara, if I'm wrong, but we've been averaging a less than. About one point five million dollars in in lost revenue uh in those years of of recession. And that is conceivable that could happen again um next year and we've already approved a budget. Uh, we will need to continue to to look at that budget and and revise as necessary. Um, I'm not being an alarmist, I'm being a realist, um and I think it's important that that we understand that. But FY twenty, um we are in, we are in good shape at this point in time, um and. You know, with. You know, some some positions that um. You know, we have some potential savings, whether it's uh the no longer having overtime. Uh, for whether it's custodial overtime, bus duties for um teachers at the elementary schools. Um, substitutes, daily substitutes who are coming in, uh things of that nature, so so we are in a position. Um, where we're doing financially okay, um we did share a document with you. Uh, with regard to um areas of of savings and how we like to approach. Um, continuing to pay uh the employees that um. You. Approved last time, which is, you know, some, a couple salaried um employees through nutrition services as well as E D P. Uh, some hourly employees for E D P and nutrition services, um and a blending at the pre-K. What I what I want to emphasize is that pre-K, we do have tuition and that tuition helps cover the cost. Of some of uh the salaries, it's there's part of a salary might be in the overall general budget, but then there are pieces of it that that get paid for out of. The um tuition, so I think if we think about our um. I don't wanna go specific individuals, I think it's inappropriate, but but that's how it works. So Barbara and I have our have come up with a, we think a a plan that we believe is the right thing to do and I mentioned last time. I am a strong advocate for our employees and certainly think. Through the the next closure period that we should be compensating them. Um, and Barbara, can you take over this piece and explain to the committee um what you and I thought about and and. Uh, reassure them that uh from my lens too, that I I feel comfortable doing this from a jet out of. Partly out of the general fund, um and and partly some things that we might wanna adopt.
Yeah, sure, um, so Jim and I have spent a considerable amount of time this week, um looking this over and and trying to figure out what was. Fair and and where the money could come from, um we do. Um, want our employees to understand that we support them, um so. We have five areas um of employees that we need to talk about today. Um, nutrition services, um there's two salaried employees, everybody else is hourly. Um, there is enough funds in the nutrition revolving account, um that we can charge their salaries to that account. Um, that account is still carrying an overage of what the state would like to see us carry. So this would actually bring us down to where the state says we should be. Um, the pre-K salaries, as Jim explained, what we're looking to pay um out of general fund. Um, for the pieces of the salaries that were paid for out of the tuition. Um, and then E D P, um the hourly employees can be paid out of their revolving fund. But they have three salaried people that we're looking to pay for out of the general fund. Um, so we have some funding from nutrition, we have some funding from E D P. We have some savings and custodial overtime, the bus duties, substitutes, a little bit of saving on bulk ed tuition. And um some bus contract savings. So, we're asking to pay these employees for the next four weeks, additional four weeks.
I'm gonna.
Barbara, and thank you for all the time looking into that.
Lori, can I? Yeah, no, I just want to, I'll share this document, um and I know it has to go into the into the record, but it's something we just produced today. So you didn't get a chance to see it, um so I will make sure, Aaron, Peeling, you have this for the records. Uh, but this is basically just describes uh in detail what Barbara just shared with you, so let me just pull it up. And then what you can see is. You see it all?
Yep.
So so this is. These are the salaries that we have uh in in the. So total's about a hundred and two thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Uh, and how we're proposing to pay for this, uh for this, again, this four-week period, remember, there's a week in there. That was uh scheduled for uh April vacation, which we wouldn't be nor normally paying those hourly employees. Um, so that's why you see a three-week and a three-week um versus the four weeks, which are our salaried employees. The nutrition revolving, the E D P revolving, and Barbara, I I think it's important to talk about, um and I was pulling this up and I may have missed it. How we're focused on ensuring that the E D P revolving account can actually. Afford uh this, so I'll turn that back over to you, I maybe you mentioned it about the rental, so.
I I did not, so, um. Initially, um there was some concern over whether E D P had enough funds in their revolving account to cover these salaries. Um, so. Um, Jim and I talked about, E D P pays rent to Ashland Public Schools. It's forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars a year. So years ago, E D P and preschool were considered. Not associated, not under the umbrella of the of the Ashland Public Schools, they were separate entities, so they paid rent. Over the years, as we brought them in under your umbrella, um. I've always felt that it was unfair to charge them the rent and over the last year or so, I've been having that conversation with Melissa Marcon Smith. Um, in the hopes that we could start chipping away and ultimately get that down to zero. Um, so what we're proposing is that E D P does not pay the rent for FY twenty. And that money stays in their revolving account and that is how they can pay for their hourly employees.
Excellent. So, um comments from school committee members?
Can you forgive me if you if you address this in your comments, I got um. I got guilty of multitasking and when you were speaking. I mean, I talked earlier, I knew some of this, but you did you speak to um the sort of the financial aspect of this? And you know, so really, if you're not paying, then folks are going on unemployment. And did you did you share at all sort of the thought or the financial aspect of that, that it doesn't really make sense for us to take that approach?
So, um, I have Barbara Tramon as well, but there there are two two components before we get too deep into it. Um, the E D P revolving and then the nutrition revolving, so of that hundred and three thousand, right? That we're looking to to potentially impact the general fund is only about thirty-five thousand, right? So that's what we're looking at impacting the entire general fund is the net difference between the two revolving accounts. So I just want that to be clear, it's not, we're impacting the the budget that was originally um set last May by that thirty-five thousand. That being said, um, the unemployment piece is an interesting. Discussion, so the CARE Act that was passed uh at the federal level uh for dealing with Corona and and unemployment. Basically states that. Those who qualify for unemployment can have six hundred dollars added to. Whatever benef- employee benefits they're getting from their um their state. So I'm gonna use an example of someone who might earn, uh so they, the state of Massachusetts, you might get fifty percent of. Um, of your your weekly salary, so you might get two hundred and thirty dollars. And you'd add the six hundred onto it, so you're getting eight hundred and thirty dollars, so at at. First glance, that's probably saying, oh, wait a minute, that's actually more, it's a it's a bigger benefit to that employee to be unemployed. Instead of being with the um paid out of the school system. Couple of things are happening, one, uh the governor uh has made it clear, and Barbara, correct me if I'm wrong, that at this point, he does not want um folks applying. Directly because of the the CARE Act, because they don't have, they don't have. The wherewithal to handle it, one, two, uh those folks who are on the qualification list. We don't know specifically uh who that is, um that's one of the 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 components. Um, and three, the 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 lag time, from what I'm reading, uh is anywhere from four to five weeks before you get that. And three, the, the, the lag time from what I'm reading is anywhere from four to five weeks before you get that first check. Even if they waive the ability to apply, you have to wait a week. Even if they waive that, that first check doesn't come for up to five weeks. Which is a, it would be a tremendous hardship for our employees. That's, that's the first case. Second scenario is how it works within the town is if it's, if it's a two hundred and thirty dollar. Benefit to the employee, the town picks up the two hundred and thirty dollar matching. I have, you know, I'm concerned that what does that mean long term? They've actually increased the, the, the defined benefit period as well. And if it goes beyond our school year, what does that look like for our employees as well? So that, I mean, Barbara, that's, those are the highlights of, of those conversations, but. You have further?
Yeah, no, I, I think you nailed it. The concerning piece for me is that the governor has said, do not apply for this yet. They don't have the guidance from the federal government yet. They don't know who's qualified, going to be qualified. They don't know exactly how much money people will be getting. And he said, even if you go into the system, it's not going to work for you yet because we don't have everybody's name in there.
Right.
So, you know, he's hoping by the end of the week, you'll have some more guidance from the federal government, but as of today, no.
So, so it may be prudent again to focus on these. The closures through May sixth, right? And then to, to then evaluate. That next component with our. With the defined employee benefits and and having a clear understanding of how that might impact the FY twenty budget. From a town level and a school level.
Thank you. Look to both of you. I just, I really wanted to highlight because I've raised the question in our prior meetings that. You know, at some point, it may be something that we, as much as we want to support employees. And my biggest concern, quite frankly, is that we think we have the budget to do it this year. But the question in my mind is, is there the ability to put ourselves in better long-term position and have all these folks. Come back and be available to us next year and avoid further cuts as we look into the FY twenty-one budget, which right now is incredibly uncertain. But I think in talking through it, yes, certainly the, the idea that the town has to pick up the cost for unemployment, which is. It's something we didn't talk about before, is a point that I want to make sure. Not only the community knows about, but the, the community knows about too, because there's likely going to be some people in the community that are quite in a question. Those, those staff, staff members that are not actively providing services right now. If not, time about our teachers, I'm sure our parent professionals and some others. But I'm sure there are some people that are being underutilized, but even beyond that, it just makes sense. For us to be making this decision now, I think, seeing where I am in support of this. At least until other things develop and we can have a more comprehensive discussion about whether or not. Continuing compensation beyond the May fourth or whatever that may date is, Jim. It makes sense that, so I eventually may to be aware of some of the other dynamics involved.
So my last two points on this, if there's anyone that knows Melissa Murcon Smith, her employees are working really hard right now. So there's no doubt in my mind. Two, they're earning their pay. They may not be sitting physically there, but I know they're zooming with kids, they're making connect, they're doing all the stuff we're asking of our, our teachers to do as well. But secondly, when, when we refer to the employees themselves. When I look at this group, these are all people we, there's, these are all people we have to have next year, no matter what. We will have the EDP staff and they will be. Paid for out of that revolving account, similar to nutrition and the pre K folks who are there. These aren't people that we'd be letting go. And, and think FY twenty-one will be impacted. These will still be employees we need in FY twenty-one as well. So just want to clear that up in terms of the folks that are on this list.
Yeah, and to be clear, my, my thoughts weren't as clear about those folks as much as I don't know, you know, we may have other staff and other aspects of the.
That's right.
That, you know, political support and not able to be fully utilized from home. I don't, I'm not suggesting that to me, because I don't know.
Yeah.
But thank you. Yield the floor back.
Anybody else want to weigh in on this? I mean, I appreciate the work that Jim and Barbara did, putting this together and finding a way to make it possible for us to. Continue to be supportive. And so I am all in favor of it, since you've shown me. How we can possibly do it for this temporary period of time and, you know, as anything that's happening right now. It's going to be important to, I think, revisit it incrementally as circumstances change. But in this moment where there's the way to do it. It's the right thing to do and I, I thank you for finding a way to do it and I support it.
I, I agree. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's, you know, while we continue to, to revisit, I, I think at least my position has always been that. I want to make it clear that. I want us to continue to do this until. There's a better option, right? Until unless that dynamic changes and on May fifth. There's a different reason to take a different direction. But I don't want them to think that, hey, we're just kicking the can either, but that. You know, we're going to, we're going to, we're a people organization, that's what we do, right? We, we service the community. These employees are part of that community, whether they live here or not. And I want to make, make sure we are. You know, doing, doing the right thing, not, not just, hey, okay, they gave me a respite for another month, but then I might be. You know, in a bad position and that our goal is to make sure we're doing what's best for this entire situation and that. You know, that, that they don't, I want to make sure they don't feel that way and that we're going to, yeah, we revisit it. But that the only way we're not going to do this is if we financially can't or there's a better, you know, variation on this.
Thanks, Paul. Aaron, did you want to weigh in? You're muted, huh? There you go.
She can do it herself. She's got the power.
Okay. Um, no, I, I agree with everything that's been said and I, I do agree with taking the measured approach in these. You know, let's go to the May sixth date and reevaluate, because I think if we. Just a couple of weeks ago and making this first decision, we're in a drastically different position. And we may have more state and federal guidance, we may. Feel like we're turning a corner or we may feel like we're rolling downhill and I think that'll help inform if we can take. A measured approach and sort of tie it with what the governor, governor closure announcements are, I think, is, is the right way to approach it.
So I, I do have a, a motion I can read if someone wants to. And let's be clear, it, it may first is that Friday, which is the, is the, the work week. So. Move to pay the salaries of nutrition services salaried and hourly employees from the school lunch revolving account. The hourly EDP from the EDP revolving account. And the EDP salaried and pre K salaried from the general fund through May first, twenty twenty.
Who wants to make that motion? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Mr. Kendall? Aaron Williams? Mark Terry?
Hi.
Kathy Bate?
Hi.
Hi. The motion passes. And this is just a time check, we do have thirty more minutes, but I, we need to jump off so that WACA and the BOS can. Start their meeting at six thirty, so just to be mindful of whatever else we have left to do.
Okay.
We, we are mindful of the time so we can get them started over there. Next up, do you have a superintendent's report, Jim, beyond what you've shared?
No, sorry, Barbara.
If you jump in about buses here?
Oh, yes.
Oh, sure. Sorry. I apologize. Yep. Should have been racked back up. Yep.
All right, so. We had the bus contract reviewed by our legal counsel. We had gotten a letter from Connolly Bus asking if we would continue paying, they would not lay off their drivers. And we could reduce the fuel cost. So we sent everything over to our lawyer, legal counsel. So the contract states we will pay for a hundred and eighty days, but then there is a clause in there that says. If there are any unforeseen circumstances for which the school is closed, such as weather. We do not have to pay for that day as long as we give them notice by six thirty AM. So the lawyer is saying. Up to you, do, do what you want. Now, Desi, we had a conference call with all the business managers on Monday. Had us all go in on a spreadsheet and name our bus contractor. And then they grouped us all together and then sent all the districts who have Connolly. An email saying, okay, you guys are all in the same group, pick one or two of you to go back and negotiate with Connolly. Desi wants some payment to go to all the bus contractors. But they're saying there are variable costs there that we should not have to pay for. So then. So Desi is saying you don't have to pay the total cost of your contract. But have some negotiations and they want us to do it as a group. So everyone who has Connolly Bus ends up with the same deal. So we are having a conference call with just Connolly Bus districts on Friday. Two business managers have stepped up to lead the negotiations. So I just need to know from the committee. I go to that meeting and say, yes, we want to be included in the negotiations and no, we don't.
Who wants to start? Paul Kendall, are you smiling?
Like, it's, it's, no offense, Barbara, that's kind of a silly question. Do we want to be part of a, of. Of a negotiation where we have no idea of what a potential outcome might be?
When do you ever know what an outcome is going to be when you go into a negotiation?
But we don't even know who's representing us or what their agendas are or what their goal is or. We have no information, but we want to be part of it. So that's why I smiled. It's kind of a.
Well, but that's the conference call on Friday. It's, it's all the business managers getting together and saying. You know, what approach are you going to take? What are we looking for? The, the two business managers who will lead the negotiations are very highly respected. Across the state. And then once.
Yeah, who, who are those two, Barbara? Are you allowed to tell us or?
Tim Rippon, I can't remember where he's from and Ian Galati from Needham. And then of, of course, I come back to you and say, this is the deal they're looking to make and.
Yeah.
On anything until you knew exactly what it was.
Yeah, I think part Barbara's just asking for permission to enter into the discussions. I don't think we're committing to anything until.
I think it makes sense to, to work as a team and, you know, I trust Barbara to, yeah, come back with the information.
Yeah, the same thing with other district tuitions will be coming down the road shortly too. They're saying the same thing with other district tuitions. They need to stay in business because we're going to need them once we go back, but are there variable costs that? They're not assuming right now that we can take off of the contract price. So that'll be coming.
Yeah, in, in, in my position on this has always been. You know, the, the, the bus drivers are just as much part of our district too, right? And our, our community, they're the first. Basically, we see, we want to be right by them, but they're also. You know, trying to figure out that balance of what's our responsibility and what's their employer's responsibility, right? So. You know, and, and so, yeah, I'm interested to see what that deal can be because obviously it's probably. Be more beneficial to an individual district as a group than, you know, doing it as a group. But, you know, it is, it is that balance of figuring out what makes the most sense because. Many of them do live in our community, they are, you know, part of, part of this school community and. You want to be right by them, but the, their employer has to, you know, step up and do the, their appropriate part too.
Right. And paying for things like fuel when nobody's using it, you know, it's one thing to pay salaries, you know, because we want to keep people afloat if we can, but. There, there seem to be some things, listen, and it's at least from what you've said, it sounds from like a legal perspective. If we really wanted to take a stand, we could maybe pay nothing. But we're, so we're trying to maybe find a way where we support our vendors, but also. Aren't paying for things that we're not using like to the extreme.
Yeah, and, and I'm saying even go further than that. Hey, they're not, they're not using any fuel. Great. Well, that doesn't mean we should still pay. For a hundred percent of their employees either, right? And they just are a pass through and they're, and they got no skin in this game and they, they don't. They, they don't feel anything by this.
Yeah, I agree, Paul, but a lot of those details you don't know until you start having the conversation. We don't know what their position is, we don't know what their financial situation is. I think my understanding too is Desi wants all the districts that use a certain company to kind of be on the same page about this. So, you know, you don't want your neighbor. Just refusing to pay everything and we're paying all of it and, you know, so I think a bunch of conversations have to happen first before we know. What we're doing. Does that make sense?
And I'll just chime in quickly and say that I certainly support the conversation. It's one of those issues that's a little bit hard for me to take the hat on that I wear professionally. Because this is, I know this is a big issue around the state. I am not a big fan of what the commissioner put out for guidance, because I think it puts us. In a very difficult spot in the worldy, where he's saying, continue making payments and I have questions about. Never mind what the Ashland contract is, whether legally we can continue to make payments on services we're not receiving. I was on a professional webinar earlier today where several people, and this is a national conference call. That their state's paying a bus company when they're doing nothing for you. Failles to make payment for a public purpose, which is whatever question, whether or not business is even legitimate. I don't know the answer to that question, but those, those issues that I'm aware of legally, I'm not an expert in. Make it difficult for me to separate that thought process from sort of the idea that. These folks are people and we want to do the right thing by people who are engaged with our kids. So I, I won't, I don't know what the right answer is, perfectly honest, but. It's certainly make, makes the most sense for us to be a part of those dialogues through Barbara or. Whoever Barbara delegates or Jim delegates that too, to hear what the others want to do. See what the opportunity comes out of that and our council is saying, yeah, you don't have to really do anything. Then, then great, we can make that decision. Once we hear sort of what the framework is that others are dealing with. And we shouldn't assume that the contract that we have Connolly is the same one that every other school district is signing. We can't assume that, so they may all be in different legal positions as well. I, I haven't, I don't know off the top of my head, but it seems to me that we hear back from Barbara as to. Any negotiation we ought to explore, whether we can have a more detailed conversation in executive session on this subject.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, Mark. That's kind of where I was going. It's like, well, what, what are we asking for permission for? Until we, you know, until those kind of high level, at least directional things occur, right? Where, where, where are those negotiators looking to go with it?
Yeah, I think it's just important that you keep up. I mean, it's an FY twenty concern. And, and that's where we, we're going to mention it and we just glossed over it before and forgot to. So. Yeah, I, I certainly think. You know, Barbara and, like she said, she's got some pretty good and very well-respected business managers, at least having that conversation with Connolly and, and I'd like her to. Have that ability to give her input to them about our concerns with our contract. And then that will allow them to at least inform us what they're thinking. We are, we are not making any payments, just so you know, right now, so.
We need a vote here or we just?
I have one thing, just at what point, because we essentially only got like a little bit over half the school year in, right? That our parents, especially parents that might be strapped, going to come back to us and ask for bus fees back because we're not providing a service for them. Which then decreases our bus revenue to be able to pay Connolly. So we also need to think about that piece of it. Because if we're trying to be fair, not only to bus employees, like we also have to start thinking about being fair to families and like. You know, I'm sure there's some families that would say, oh, my God, keep it, keep and keep it as like a donation to keep helping paying the bus drivers. There's some families that are going to be strapped enough that maybe didn't qualify for the reduced fee, but that that could be extremely helpful. To have that, have that feedback.
And that's spot on. I mean, Barbara and I had that conversation about. And that's spot on. I mean, Barbara and I had that conversation about all of the 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 fees that we've collected. It's not just the the bus. It's it's bus, EDP, preschool, et cetera. So when we have a more definitive answer as to what school closure looks like, that's when we can make those decisions as to the reimbursement of the families. It it would be premature to do that because we have no clue what that might actually look like um at this point in time. That's all. But we're, believe me, those funds go back. We're we we know that. It it's um we just need to to have more definitive um more definition of when we're closing or for how long. But Aaron, your comments are spot on. So. I don't think we need a vote.
Consensus that Barbara can 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 continue that conversation with uh
So I move for Barbara Durand to enter into uh conversations, but I would not say negotiations with the Connolly, the other Connolly districts.
Well, I I I thought we just said we don't need a vote and Laurie's asking for consensus, you know?
Yeah, I think so. I just think it's consensus that you're all agree that she should have that. Yeah. Yeah, it's fine.
Because we don't really have anything to go on right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you for all that information and
But I have I have nothing in the superintendent's report. I shared it all.
What about you, Paul Viera?
Given the fact that it's 6:15 and we have, um, I think 17 minutes left, I'm all set.
Wow, how good is your math? 6:15, 17, it's 6:32.
It's 6:12, so you're not that wrong. And your math is weird.
I know.
Paying attention, Jimmy.
Well, I'm paying attention.
Um, hey, do you want me to read my thing, my uh blurb?
Yes, Kathy, it's time for that, please.
All right, let me read it.
Your blurb.
Can you hear me?
Blurb.
Um, between March 12th, 2020 and March 31st, 2020, I Kathleen Bates authorized by my signature payables in the amount of 705,323,007 cents. This includes general fund expenses of 354,371 dollars and 76 cents, revolving expenses of 300,155 dollars and 83 cents, grant expenses of 14,846 dollars and 33 cents, meals tax expenses of 157 dollars and 90 cents and capital expenses of 35,791 dollars and 25 cents. Finally, I authorized payroll in the amount of 1,082,646 dollars and 66 cents. All by signature scanning and sending it back to Barbara.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Um, next up, we have minutes, March 11th. Anybody?
Uh, I don't think I have anything on it.
Looks fine to me.
Want to make a motion, Mr. Kendall?
Uh, I move, we accept the uh minutes of March 11th, 2020 as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mark? Yes?
Hi.
Yes?
Yep.
Kathy?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Yes, me. Um, okay.
I I I said I as well, you didn't ask me, but.
Do we have any donations?
Yes, we do. Um, Denise Montoya Pottery, $100 to the AHS Student Council Reality Fair. Uh, AFI, $2,214 to the inclusive playground equipment for Warren School. APS Student and Staff, $1,097.05 to Special Olympics for Hats for a Cause. Uh, Ashland Educators Association, $1,000 to the Grab and Go Lunch Program for Students. Uh, Ashland Historical Society, $500 to uh Grab and Go Lunch Program for Students for $4,911.05.
Laurie, you're moving.
That's great.
We have a motion to accept the Gibson donations.
Uh, so moved.
Kathy, um
I'll second.
All in favor? Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Aaron?
I.
Laurie, I. Okay, thank you. And finally, we just have member updates and action items. Where is Rachel still here?
Yes, I am.
She is, Rachel.
So I want to hear from you. How are you doing? How are your friends doing? How?
We're all struggling. Um, yeah, it's tough to think that we're not going to have the senior year we pictured. Um, you know, we were texting a little bit and talking about how we talked about all these fun things coming up and now to think that we might not have that, it's, you know, it stinks. And then on top of that, we're just adjusting to the new um schedule and online learning, which is definitely very different from what we're used to. So.
Wow, we feel for you, Rachel.
Don't worry, Rachel, there's already plans in the mommy crowd that your graduation party, whenever it happens, is going to be awesome.
Yeah, it's out there. Am I there? Okay.
Yeah, there you are.
Yeah, Rachel, I'm sorry. It's definitely um a very bizarre situation and it's, we're all grieving lots of different things, but especially you guys have a lot that you were anticipating a lot of changes. Hopefully, everybody knows where to go for support if needed. And what about, is there anything anybody else wants to share? Obviously, we're not, maybe we're going to some Zoom meetings, but other than that, anybody here want to share?
Yes, so as long as nobody else has something, uh, I'd like to provide an update from uh Menendez Building Project. So um we have been obviously uh trying to keep the projects going, uh, both this and the public safety uh project. So last night, uh, I want to thank the uh the building committee. We had a robust three-plus hour meeting. Um, and the outcome of that is we did uh select a a design option to put forth as our recommendation to uh the community um and the and the uh the boards for consideration. So we we chose uh uh one of the Menendez uh site options uh to be tuned for the ones that uh want to look at the um the presentation. And uh so I'm actually crafting today uh a note to the tri board chairs uh with that information just as an update. So that's still moving along. So we hit our date of for the the building committee making a recommendation. Uh, that was our goal to have that done uh last night. So we did that. So again, thank you to uh to the committee, to the tri board, uh, tri boards as well. Um, with everything going on, you know, we were able to keep our schedule, which which is uh which is no small feat and everything that everybody's doing. So um, but that's exciting. So we we have uh some some meat to chew on. And I can uh I can include and Laurie, you'll be on this email, so I'll just have you forward it to uh the other members here um uh with just the update of what the what the recommendation is. I I've I've detached some of the slides from our presentation last night that just had that option. So so I can be highlighted for people.
Thank you, Paul. And also, if there are any um Ashland residents, community members that would like to give any comment or input, I know it's a little bit different than the format when we're all together present, but you have just as op- opportunity to participate here on Zoom. So um please raise your hand if you're here and you would like to make a comment. None? Um, anything else? Motion?
Well, hold on, Melissa.
I just wanted to say thank you to Jim and Barbara for working everything out for us and for their support and for the whole school committee. I just want to say thank you. Um, and I didn't, I also wanted to mention that I learned the other day that we had a longtime EDP employee who passed away on Monday, um, Pat Maguire. And I just uh just wanted to read a one little thing that I had put on the Ashland uh web website, the Ashland Mass page, just a little piece, just in honor of Pat. It's very short. Um, I'll skip the beginning, but it says, Mrs. Maguire was a force like no other, loving the children fiercely and making each one feel very special. I know there are college graduates who remember sitting by her desk as a child while she painstakingly sketched their portrait and others who will never forget her singing silly songs with them or her love of the Red Sox. Anyone who had the privilege of knowing Mrs. Maguire will never forget her and she left her mark on EDP forever. There are no words. And all day long, we've been inundated with um messages of of care and concern and and memories. Um, one particular one that struck me was Jake Letessa's mom sent me of the photo of Jake that she sketched when he was in first or second grade. And it's, you can see it's framed, so it's still hanging on his wall. And I've gotten a bunch of those. And then um a current third grader, Eva, wrote a letter that she wants me to pass on to the family. It says, Dear Mrs. Maguire, thank you for all the special memories. I loved when you were the first person who greeted me. It was super fun making crafts with you. You made me so happy because you were always smiling. I will always miss being with you. So it's just a little sample um of what the day has been like. Uh, so I just wanted to share.
Thank you.
Melissa, our our hearts go out to you and everybody else in the program and all of the kids. It's just another thing to be sad about right now. It's just a lot of sadness, but that particularly, I'm sure is weighing heavy on your heart.
Yes, not 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 to be with the kids right now, um, but I'm happy that their parents are with them, they're home, you know, so that's okay. So, thanks.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Anybody else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is everybody in favor of adjourned? Mr. Terry?
Hi.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Tasty, yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Hi.
Aw.
Thanks, Preston.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
All right, everybody. Thank you all.
All right. Thanks.